Festerson, Harding, Jerem, Melton, Pauls, Palermo. Mr. President.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for our invocation today by Councilmember Pete Festerson.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Republic, the Lichens, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I did want to start today by noting the tragedies that happened in Toronto and Nashville in the last several days and let folks know that we're thinking about them and their communities. On a lighter note, I wanted to talk about two things I thought about over the weekend. One, of course, was it was Earth Day on Sunday, and I was thinking about how we impact those things as a city. And I know we're all thinking about those things as we discuss our waste hauling contracts and other issues, and I hope we keep that in mind going forward this year, that we do have a substantial opportunity this year to impact how that's handled in Omaha and to be a little more progressive in how we handle those things, not just about efficiency, but also for environmental impact when we talk about composting and recycling and CNG trucks and all the things we can enhance in that contract, as well as trying to reduce litter and get upstream on litter and waste prevention when we talk about plastic bags and how we might handle that as well. Also, a huge opportunity with OPBD to talk about LED streetlight conversions that were underway. So, all those things together, I think, are realistic goals for Omaha in 2018 and could really make a difference for our environment. And then, secondly, and in more short fashion, I also had the opportunity to attend the Nebraska Main Society's annual fundraiser over the weekend, and I was reminded of one of my favorite sayings that we can all take to heart, and that is, "We should all strive to be the person your dog thinks you are." Thank you.
Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted in the white binder on East Wall legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this meeting of the Omaha City Council. The council thanks you for being here this afternoon. And as a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask you to mute or turn off any of your electronic devices. Before we begin the major portion of our agenda today, we have a proclamation that we would like to read up, and it's on behalf of Bikers Against Child Abuse. And if you don't mind, I'll read up the proclamation and give it to its rightful owners and give them the opportunity to make some comments. And our proclamation reads, "Whereas Bikers Against Child Abuse, or BACA, exists with the intent to create a safer environment for abused children, and whereas BACA was actualized in 1995, when the first ride was held to visit wounded children and bring them into the biker family, and whereas shortly after forming this first chapter in Utah, the word quickly spread about the work of BACA, and it has grown to include almost all of the United States and also has representation internationally. And whereas BACA stands ready to lend support to those wounded by child abuse by involving them with an established, united organization, and whereas BACA is a strong organization of dedicated individuals who are willing to sacrifice any and all in order to protect and secure a child's basic right to a happy childhood, and whereas BACA works with local and state officials who are already in place to protect children, now therefore be it resolved by the city council, the City of Omaha recognizes that April is National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and also recognizes the good work of the Bikers Against Child Abuse has done to protect our children. We have set our hand and caused the official seal of the City of Omaha to be affixed on this 24th day of April 2018. And to BACA, thank you very much for the work that you do and hope that you will continue." Paul McGrath, I think, is going to receive the proclamation, and any words you might want to share with us would be greatly appreciated.
Well, thank you, Mr. Gray. However, you pretty much stole all the words out of my mouth. You seem very informed about what we do. Thank you very much. Yes, Bikers Against Child Abuse, first and foremost...
Do we have your name and address?
Name and address for the record, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Paul McGrath, 3507 Katy Drive, Council Bluffs, Iowa. I hope you don't hold that against me.
You could pay at the door on the way out. No, just go ahead.
Yes, Bikers Against Child Abuse, first and foremost. We're not a motorcycle club, we're not an outlaw club, we're not a riding club, we don't have any political affiliation or religious affiliation. We have no boundaries. A child is a child, no matter what type of home they're raised in, no matter what political affiliation their parents have. And as you mentioned, we did start in 1995 in Provo, Utah, by a gentleman named, we'll call him Chief. Chief was a licensed mental health professional as well as a child play therapist, and that means he specializes in dealing with children between the ages of three and eight. I know, three, that is very, very young, being related to child abuse, but, I mean, I'm sorry it happens. And he noticed during his sessions that his children were making good progress, then all of a sudden, out of the blue, one would show up and just clam up, not be open, just, you know, basically clam up. And come to find out, after some investigation, he found out that the perpetrator of that child was trying to intimidate and threaten the family by saying, "Don't testify against me." As you all know, child abusers do not fare well in general population, so they will do anything they can to stay out of prison. And that's pretty much where Bikers Against Child Abuse comes in. We try and empower the child to, you know, we exist as a body of bikers to empower a child not to feel threatened. I'm sorry, help me, what was that?
That's okay. So, basically, what...
Your record, need your name and address for the record, too, please.
Ronald Lemons, 5423 South 36th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Anyway, what we do...
Get you in front of the mic, please.
Yeah, should be taken from there.
We get our referrals through our helpline, through agencies like Project Harmony or numerous others. We do initials on the phone. We have a child liaison that takes these calls. We go out and we do the initial interview with the guardian, parent, foster parent, whoever they might be with, and the child, decide if they meet our criteria. From there, we go and we do what we call a Level One, a First Visit. We take the whole group, we roar in on our bikes, we bring that child into our family, give them best road names, assign them two primaries, which they have their numbers 24 hours a day that can call them, 3 o'clock in the morning, say, "Had a bad dream, I need someone to talk to you." Those primaries will be there for them. They also coordinate, coordinate, therapy. We also have a therapy fund, because obviously, some of these kids don't have insurance or they can't afford therapy. Let's see, after that, we pretty much, we have a child picnic, we have a holiday party, and then, once we take them through the court systems, we go to court with them. I'm sure you've seen us in the hallways here, because we're here a lot, unfortunately. And once we take them through that system, we're not big brothers, big sisters, we don't go to ballgames and that kind of stuff. We pretty much let them go back to being kids.
Well, thank you.
Any questions?
I don't think we have any questions. I think we do want to thank you, though, and thank you for the work that you do and everything that we can do to help in the life of a child is very much needed, and thank you for doing it. Appreciate it much. Thank you all. And you can stay for the rest of the meeting if you like, or you can leave whenever you get ready, if you want to. Madam Clerk.
Items six to nine relate to the same project and can be considered together for the MCC Smithfield Edition located at Edward Babe Gomez Avenue and east of 33rd Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item six, an ordinance to rezone this property from HI District to HI District. Item seven, an ordinance to rezone this property from GEO District and HI District to GEO District. Item eight, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for MCC Smithfield Edition. Item nine, a resolution to approve the final plat for MCC Smithfield Edition.
Public hearing on agenda items six through nine is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion seconded to approve items six through nine, there are no lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Items six through nine are approved, seven to zero. Item 10, an ordinance to create road maintenance district number 745-29 in the City of Omaha for the purpose of improving garden road from south 105th Street, south to its terminus, north of West Center Road, and to fix and define the boundaries of said district.
Public hearing on agenda item number 10 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Stephen Gin of 2516 Garden Road, where residents on the road...
I'm Deborah Gin of 2516 Garden Road.
Mary Ann Manners, 2614 Garden Road.
So, basically, we're in favor of this measure. The road is considerably substandard, it's barely a base layer with considerable erosion, considerable potholes in it, and it really needs to be completely redone. It was in reasonable condition until about four years ago, when the Omaha Public Works Completely Unannounced came in and completely ground up the street and left it as gravel, and so it's been gravel since then. And the maintenance on it has been marginal with a new layer of gravel about every year and a half or so, and so, we would like to have it completely repaved, and the citizens of the street are willing to pay for the share of it. Half of the street is city property, and so, the eastern half of the street is all city property, and so, we'd eventually like to ask the city to pay for half the repaving of the street as well.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents? Are you finished, or do you have any other?
The only thing that I would add is that that happened four years ago. We have been in our house 34 years, and in our opinion, it started to get worse when Deffenbach came in and their large, large trucks. So, it has actually been in very poor repair since longer than four years ago, and during that time, again, as Stephen said, we have had very little maintenance, and we heard we were supposed to get leveled and all of that twice a year. That has not happened. We have had more erosion and definitely some spots even more because of the drainage ditch on the east side of the road that the city does own and supposedly maintain. So, we're kind of in a catch-22 where forces beyond our control make the situation even worse. So, I am also in favor of the proposal.
Thank you. Any other comments? Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Pauls.
Heather, can I have you come forth?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works.
Heather, I just have a question, because I heard the property owners, which I think there are nine of them, I heard at least one, or if not more than that, that the city owns part of that, and I just need to have that clarified.
Sure. I actually brought a map. So, this is the district that's being proposed to be created today, and you can kind of see through the parcel lines here, the district actually follows the curve of the roadway because it's an RMD, so it's an asphalt overlay district for the road as it was built. This area was originally plotted to have a boulevard that kind of went curved in two areas, so this entire span, including the drainage area that the neighbors refer to, is street right-of-way. It's not an independent parcel, it's originally a part of what was planned but never built. That kind of helps address that issue.
Okay. Then, just for more clarification, I'm counting nine properties there, so whatever the figure would be, would be split, divided by the nine individuals, the nine property owners?
Per our policy for irregular parcels like this, yes, we would recommend an assessment based on an even split.
Okay, and then, if we saw chills as a council, we could grant some waivers on that. That's not to be done today.
That's correct. That would happen through a separate resolution put forward by the council.
Okay, and just for the audience, if we pass this today, this just does what? Our vote today does what?
Sure. So, what's happening is basically creating this district as an entity that we can act on. So, by voting in the affirmative today, you're creating this road maintenance district, which would then allow things like a cost-share waiver, should that be put forward, it would allow us to go in and open up a protest period, should residents feel very strongly or have changed their minds that may have petitioned in favor, and ultimately, would allow us to then get costing very specific to this project and eventually construct it.
Okay, but right now, today, it's just...
The very first step.
Very first step, so there are other steps along the way, in case the people decide this is not...
That is correct.
Too wide to go.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. There are no further lights? Is there a motion?
Yes.
Oh, question, Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. So, I guess my question would be, with the RMD, because we don't have a policy, I thought I heard because of some of this property, they thought being bordering city property. Are they asking for the city to be part, like, number 10 of the cost-sharing?
I can answer, Heather Tippy Pierce, Public Works.
As... Do you know?
Part of my investigation, since we are not a parceled property owner, we would not appear as an additional property owner. What exists there is street right-of-way. If this gets created today and the city council should choose to waive the policy of assessing 100% on the property owners, then, yes, a certain amount of cost-share could be applied through that action.
Okay, so, one more question. So, with the RMD, then this is a 50% cost-share?
We have plans on SID.
Oh, we're not that far yet.
The department doesn't set that policy, that would have to happen through an action of the city council.
Okay. So, I'll just leave one more comment, then, no more questions. I think we're seeing this each and every week, RMDs, SIDs in front of us, which, because we don't have a street policy, it's costing us money, regardless of how you want to look at it. 50% cost-share, I'll just say, we're spending money on roads that we shouldn't be spending money on, especially with unimproved roads that are in my district, which, they're not going to have the luxury of standing here in front of me to do this cost-share. So, I think as we see this each and every week, and it doesn't seem like it's going away, I'm just going to put this out here, we need a policy for roads, and we need to bring it forward sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pauls.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree, we do need a policy, and maybe we need to look at different parts of the city differently than we do at others, but that's, to me, is for the future. Today, we just need to decide whether we're going to make this a district or not, and then hopefully, we don't have to keep revisiting this on, because we have another one after this one. Hopefully, we can get that resolved by a policy a little bit further down the line. So, but I do ask for your support for this today.
One second.
It's been moved, moved and seconded, okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve item 10. When item 11 comes up, I'll share some thoughts I have also, Mr. Palermo, on specifically your district and mine, and the challenges that we face. But it's been moved and seconded and no further lights to approve item 10. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerem.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 10 is approved, seven to zero. Item 11, an ordinance to create road maintenance district number 745-30 in the City of Omaha for the purpose of improving Leavenworth Street from south 90th Street to south 91st Avenue and 91st Circle, south of Leavenworth Street, and to fix and define the boundaries of said district.
Public hearing on agenda item number 11 is today. Proponents, please. Those are in favor. Proponents, please.
Kyle Crable from 826 South 91st Circle. And so, I'm here as a proponent for this road maintenance district. Our street has kind of gone around and around about what to do. We've had individuals on our street seek out individual contractors to fill potholes from time to time. That becomes problematic because it doesn't last, and we have a hard time getting sort of everybody on the street to share in the cost. Talked about SID, a more sustainable solution. That's a problem because we have a cul-de-sac that's sort of a small road, and we don't want to widen the road, and also, we have people in this district that basically, funding is a problem, so we go up to that level, that's too much for people on fixed incomes. So, we've kind of gone to the halfway point with the road maintenance district, it's a little bit cheaper, but we definitely, our streets are crumbling, and so we have to do something. We've been waiting around for you guys to make a permanent policy, you know, people in town to make a permanent policy, but I think at this point, we're ready to move forward.
Thank you. Are there any other, does that include your testimony?
Yeah, that's enough.
Okay, that's enough, okay. Any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding.
Thanks, Mr. President. I won't repeat some of the same comments, Mr. Pauls, because they apply here as well, but I just generally ask the council for their support in the formation of this district. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, my comments will be brief to a certain extent. I think I've been supportive of all of the districts when they've had these issues come up, but Mr. Palermo raises a really good point in that, specifically in his district and mine, we have individuals who can't participate in even paying half. And so, having a policy in place, while I know a policy is going to be important, I don't know how well that's going to, I don't know how well that policy is going to address the concerns that you and I have, Mr. Palermo, about the individuals in our district, the number of unimproved roads that we have, and the inability of some of our residents to even pay half of what the cost is going to be, but it is something that we need to continue to address. And I certainly would have any response to that if you have any thoughts about that as well, but I, that's kind of my feeling about it now. I've supported, you know, and I think we still should support those unimproved roads that need to be taken care of, no matter where they are in the city, but we need to recognize that there are some special needs that you and I have in our districts. Mr. Pauls and then Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I find it hard to argue with what you're, with the reasons why you have some concerns. I need to come in, the mayor, she has given additional money for roads, but if this still is a significant factor, I think the city council needs to go forth with a plan, plan to see what we can do, if we can do anything about it. But I do, I mean, I do think the mayor has been trying to increase that part of the budget, but if we need to do more, then maybe we need to change some of our priorities, even here on the council.
Either that or figure out how we do in some of the more depressed areas, how we address that.
Find some combination, yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Palermo.
Thank you, President Gray. And, yeah, I agree with you 100%, and as we see these each and every week on the agenda, I'm not saying I'm against them, I mean, it's great that the City of Omaha, in certain areas, the residents can come forward and split this cost, but unfortunately, in some, there's not, so I'll just keep saying it until we move forward, get back to the drawing board on this policy, we need a street policy. Thank you.
Is there a, oh, Mr. Jerem.
Yeah, I continue to support these as they come through as well, in each of the districts, and I think we've all agreed, there's not a district that doesn't have this issue. It's a citywide issue in approximately 300 miles of roads, or $300 million problem, anyway. And as we address the concerns of districts that have roads in high-poverty areas, I would remind council members that for the SID funds, or street improvement district funds, at least I have a fair degree of confidence that the cost-share is coming from the capital improvement plan budget that the mayor puts together over the winter months. So, if you have a request from constituents who want an SID in a high-poverty area, you could apply through the CIP to Public Works to have that, and through planning, ranked as a priority, studied, and then they'll make a recommendation as to whether that could qualify as a part of the CIP. I didn't look up for Mr. Curtis, if he's back there, the finance director.
Steve Curtis, City Finance.
Are the funds that we're using for the cost-share on the street improvement districts coming from capital improvement?
Yes.
How about the RMD cost-share?
Yes.
So, if a council member had a constituency that was in a high-poverty census tract and a block that wanted a street improvement district or a roadway maintenance district, they have the ability to come and apply through the CIP process?
Yes.
And are you familiar with how planning of Public Works does that, or do I need to ask Mr. Stube or Ms. Rockwell?
I think maybe Public Works may be the right party for that.
Mr. Stube, are you back there?
Bob Stube, Public Works. So, if I understand correctly, what you're asking for is a specific location that would be a request to the CIP committee, essentially, to specifically identify that one for cost-share? And are you saying that there would be more than what has been, I guess, established by the council with regard to what that percentage is?
Right, or is the process that you're using basically to allocate a pot of funds from which there could be access to, depending upon who applies and their willingness to do a cost-share?
Yeah, essentially, in the CIP, there is a specific category that is just street improvement districts, there's no specific location, so those are handled as they come forward from the residents in that particular area, so there's no specific location identified within the CIP.
Is there a process, though, where a council member could make the request?
Yeah, there's always that opportunity when we start, when planning starts initiating to development of the CIP for the subsequent year, that there can be a request by a council member for any type of capital improvement, whether it's transportation-related or public facilities, or whatever it might be.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let me follow up on that question a little bit. Mr. Stube, if once a council member identifies a specific area, and we start with that process, does that, that area that we're talking, whatever that area is, does that area still have to come up with a 50% cost-share? Because that's what the issue is here.
Again, the current policy is that the property owners are responsible for 100%.
For 100%?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
And then, by resolution, we can approve the cost-share, or by an injunction.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. It's, okay, moved and seconded to approve item 11, there are no further... There are no further lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 11 is approved, seven to zero. Item 12, an application to consider, a Class C liquor license application for Getaway Inc., doing business as The Getaway, located at 4745 South 96th Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 12 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Council Joe Nats, on behalf of Getaway Inc. and its president, Brian Shoup, who's present, here for questions, if there are any.
Thank you. Is there an address that you have to?
222 South 15th Street, Suite 316.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 12. No lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 13 and 14 are approved, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 13 and 14 can be considered together. Applications to consider, Class C and E liquor license applications for Lighthouse Restaurants LLC, doing business as Lighthouse Pizza, located at 1170 Capital Avenue.
Public hearing on agenda items numbers 13 and 14 are today. Proponents, please.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here today on behalf of Lighthouse Pizza, and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 13 and 14. No lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15, an application to consider, a Class I liquor license for V3 Food Ventures LLC, doing business as Flavors, located at 1901 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Pauls.
President, Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Is it quieter these days that you're down here instead of the legislature?
It is. This is a much better arena.
Did you say, oh, I like that, this is a much better arena?
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
I know my audience.
Been moved? Been moved and seconded to approve. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 15 is approved, seven to zero.
Item 16, an application to appoint Kimberly B. Stonies as manager of G.M.R.I. Inc., doing business as The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, number 1302, to their Class I liquor license, located at 7505 Dodge Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
I am Kimberly Stonies, 363 North 185th Terrace, Apartment 101. I'm here on behalf of The Olive Garden, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 16. No lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an application to appoint Catherine L. Brown as manager of Metropolitan Community College Culinary Corporation, doing business as Sage Bistro, to their Class I K liquor license, located at 5300 North 30th Street, Building 22.
Public hearing on agenda item number 17 is today. Proponents, please.
Mr. President, Council James Libero, general counsel at Metropolitan Community College, here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed.
There were one question.
I was going to say, Ms. Melton.
I didn't want him to walk in.
Yes, Ms. Melton.
Now, I just wanted to note, Sage Bistro, this is opening at Metro Community College, so is this just part of the college, or is this open to the public?
It's, it's been open to the public for a number of years, probably 10 or so.
And they, and it's open on a, like, a daily basis that people can go down?
Breakfast, lunch, and dinner. It's better, for dinner, it's best to make reservations.
Okay. And, and is it run by the, the college and the chefs and the students?
Students run, run the whole thing.
Oh, I, I just think that's wonderful. I haven't been there, so maybe I'll have to.
I'll have to get you down there.
I'll have to get down there, get down there for lunch at some point. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Melton, you absolutely have to get down there. These students do some amazing cooking.
Yeah.
They really do.
Okay, take it.
Is there a motion for item 17? Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 17 is approved, seven to zero. Item 18, an application to appoint Dennis W. Clark as manager of Petrol III LLC, doing business as KICK 66, to their Class D liquor license, located at 2505 Abbott Drive Plaza.
Public hearing on agenda item number 18 is today. Proponents, please.
Dennis Clark, member of Petrol III LLC, 1230 South 120th Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68144.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, moved and seconded to approve item 18. No lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, an application to consider, a Class I liquor license for V3 Food Ventures LLC, doing business as Flavors, located at 1901 Farnham Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 15 is today. Proponents, please.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Avenue, here for any questions.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Item 16, an application to appoint Kimberly B. Stonies as manager of G.M.R.I. Inc., doing business as The Olive Garden Italian Restaurant, number 1302, to their Class I liquor license, located at 7505 Dodge Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 16 is today. Proponents, please.
I am Kimberly Stonies, 363 North 185th Terrace, Apartment 101. I'm here on behalf of The Olive Garden, and I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve item 16. No lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 18 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda, any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda and the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
Public, the public hearings on agenda items numbers 19 through 27 were held on April 17, 2018. Moved and seconded to approve?
26.
Oh, okay. Will we remove?
Oh, yeah. Can we remove 26 for an amendment? I would want 19 to 25, 27.
The motion is from 19 to 25 and, and item 27. There are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Would you explain the amendment, please?
The amendment?
I believe the amendment was just to correct an address, a property address.
Yeah, the property address.
Just to correct a property?
Yeah.
Is there an amendment we should know about? Is Bernard here? Is there anybody who can address what the amendment is?
Holly Barrett, 1620 Dodge Street, Suite 140, I'm the executive director of the Omaha Downtown Improvement District. We hadn't received an amendment, but if it is for an address within the assessment that is just, is incorrect and just needs to be corrected, we can certainly do that if it's not affecting the rest of the ordinance.
Yeah, it appears that the owner of the property at 312 South 16th Street, number 92, needed to be changed to Mr. Jackson Trust, Ryan Alexander Jackson, as a result of a transfer in ownership, so it's cleaning up an ownership record change. But you're, anyone's free to look at it if they want.
That's at the National Building, and it's been undergoing lots of issues.
Thank you.
So that, that makes sense to me.
Okay. Thank you. Move to approve the amendment.
Moving and seconded to approve the amendment. Mr. Harding, you okay with where we are?
Sure, except we didn't have anything on our agenda that there was even amendments, so.
Yeah, I know.
Just asking the question.
It's, it sounds like it's just a cleanup.
Okay.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve item 26. There are no further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item, our amendments approved, seven to zero.
The public hearing on agenda items numbers 28 through 43 are today. If you wish to address the city council, I'm sorry.
Move to approve 26 as amended.
Oh, we need to, okay, I'm sorry, we need to prove, as amended. We need to prove item 26 as amended, sorry.
Move to approve 26 as amended.
Second, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Oh, that's right. That's on the, but that's on the resolutions. Okay. The public hearing on agenda items numbers 28 through 43 are today. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, you need to come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by your name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. We have to take item 35 off of the, off of the agenda for a one-week layover, but other than that, the other items are, are open for discussion, pro or con.
Move to remove 35.
For a one-week layover.
Moving and seconded to remove item 35 for a one-week layover. No further lights, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Is there a motion for the others?
We have the public hearing.
Proponent, yeah.
Correct.
I, I announced it once, so let me announce it one more time. If you have, if you, regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the agenda item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent.
Thank you, sir. Joy Suter, 1117 North 88th Street. I'm here in support of item number 34, which would be the 50/50 cost share for the street improvement district that was approved last week by this board, seven to zero. We would respectfully request that you approve that cost share. I know that the roads are a hot topic, and I've been listening to what you've been saying today. not be replaced, and would be maintained by the city of Omaha. Two weeks ago, we get this letter in the mail saying that we're having a neighborhood meeting, and that now she has sold out on us and is forcing us to go on M U D. There are several residents in our neighborhood that are against this as well as I am. But when we had this meeting a couple of weeks ago, it sounded to them like this was all a done deal. And I said, I'm coming down here to make my point. The point is, you are going to spend over $500,000 to replace a community well system that is very functional. The water is excellent. It's better than the water you get out of the plat that's purified by M U D. I can guarantee you that. What you ought to be doing with this money, based on all the other things I've been hearing about the road systems and what needs to be done, you need to take this half a million dollars and spend it towards something that is of more benefit to all the people of the city of Omaha, not something that's going to be replaced that is very well-maintained and taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any others who wish to speak? Yes, sir.
Yes. I'm Steve Skinner. I live at 18039 Trail Ridge Road, Omaha, Nebraska, in the Rolling Meadows subdivision. And I apologize, I was ready to be a proponent, but then when you skipped to 34, I was confused by that. So I still...
Yes.
Speak as a proponent.
Yeah, either or can speak at the same time.
Yeah, either or can speak.
I have to say that the Rolling Meadows subdivision has been kind of a little community for 40 years, for a long time, and that the city of Omaha has grown out around us. And so, of course, there are people who find themselves in the city of Omaha who aren't really pleased with that. I would like to speak in favor of this resolution, I think it's 392, for two reasons. Number one, the well system that we have is incapable of adequate fire suppression. We have had a fire, a small fire, and it was put out, but every fire has to be put out by tankers. Although we have hydrants, and we have modern, by modern standard water means, we do not have sufficient pressure to be able to put out a house fire. The fire department knows that. They've come out to service with a fire, they have to come out with a tanker. So I think since the city of Omaha has surrounded us on the north, on the east, on the south, and on the west, we are kind of an island. And I think it would be a good idea to be connected to city water just for the fire suppression aspect. But there's another aspect. The other aspect is that unfortunately, we have not paid for water that we have used for decades. What I mean by that is that there's been a flat rate. Whether I used a drop or a million gallons, the cost was the same. And I spoke often against that policy, but it was the policy of SID 286, and I don't think it's a good thing to return to that. People who want to return, retain our wells and return to that well system, I'm sure, also want to continue with the price that they've experienced, which is flat. One drop, a million gallons, same monthly cost. So those are my two reasons. I think fire suppression and because of the preciousness of the water resource paying in a metered way what the water is actually worth. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I want to make sure that I'm accurate. Now, were you talking, were you speaking on item 34? Were you speaking on item 28? 28, okay, all right. Made it, made it on 34. Okay, all right, item 28.
When you skipped ahead to 34, I wasn't sure what that meant for me.
Okay, all right, thank you. Are there any other proponents or opponents that wish to speak on items 28 through 43, with the exception of 35? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Moved and seconded to approve items 28 through 34 and 36, 36 through 43. There are no lights. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 44, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment on certain lots, parts of lots, and pieces of real estate in the city of Omaha to cover the cost of constructing sidewalks in District Number SWR 2017-01. A is communication in opposition, B is amendment of the whole requested by the Public Works Department.
Public hearing on agenda item number 44 is, well, the vote is today, actually. It's, or it's on final reading. Communication.
The public hearing was held on the 17th.
Yeah, the public hearing was held on the 17th. Is there a motion?
Move the amendment of the whole, right?
Correct.
Move amendment B. It's been moved and seconded to move item B. Roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 44 is amended in the whole, has been approved, seven to zero. Item 45, an ordinance approving a redevelopment and tax increment financing loan agreement with Howard Street Landmark LLC to implement the Scott Tent and Oning Company Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Project Plan located at 1501 Howard Street in the amount of $572,659.
Public hearing on agenda item number 45 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 46, an ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable liquids storage district to be known as District Number B-200 located at 2929 California Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 46 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 47, an ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable liquids storage district to be known as District Number B-201 located at 6262 Lindberg Drive.
Public hearing on agenda item number 47 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 48, an ordinance to establish a new Class B flammable liquids storage district to be known as District Number B-202 located at 4228 South 72nd Street.
Public hearing on agenda item number 48 is today. Proponents, please. Seeing none, are there any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Item 49, an ordinance to add Section 2-72 to expand the ability of the mayor to pardon a person convicted of an offense under any section of the Omaha Municipal Code.
Public hearing on agenda item number 49 is today. Proponents, please.
Good afternoon, Matt Cuzzi, City of Omaha Lot Department, here to answer any questions regarding item number 49.
Thank you. Are there any other proponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, are there any opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public...
I'm an opponent. My name's Lucy Maness, 518 North 40th Street. An opponent, 449 for various reasons. Got an attachment for this item, and it's a letter from the city prosecutor and the mayor's office, Jean Stott-Hurt, that reads in part, "The only restriction to this proposal of expanding the pardon of the mayor, the only restriction would be that the mayor cannot consider a pardon for a drunk-driving conviction under the ordinance until 15 years have passed since the date of arrest or citation. This is done to conform to Nebraska law, which presently has 15-year lockback, look-back period for enhancing a drunk-driving conviction." So the section, if changed, would be taken out of a chapter of the municipal code. That's what they propose, to put it in Chapter 2, Section 272. Well, I don't think that's a correct view to say only, the only restriction would be, because what we're dealing with is the executive of the city, the mayor, to have the ability to pardon all of the municipal code. And so you're going to put that capacity in the municipal codes. I don't think that's correct. If Omaha wants to give the mayor the pardoning ability, power, it should be in the city charter. It should not be in the municipal code. To give the pardon power to the mayor in the municipal code, it should be in Article 3 of the charter that says the executive branch. In this article, in the charter, Article 3, the executive branch, it lists powers and duties of the mayor, right there. If we're going to give the mayor the capability to pardon all municipal code individuals who have violated or have been convicted, to have consideration, it should be in the charter, the city charter. And there's a way to amend the city charter. It's spelled out, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the actual excerpt, but it is a general, it's a section for general items. And the amendment, to amend, to amend the city charter, you put a convention together and so forth there's consideration. That is done not by the city prosecutor, or their mayor's office, or anybody else that may have submitted this idea. It should be for the convention to look at and say, yes, this is appropriate. Because such a power, it's hierarchical. It's in a hierarchy of assembly, assemblies throughout the world, in particular the United States and Omaha. The capacity to pardon should be in a doc, excuse me, in an authority that is much strenuous, difficult to do, to either add or take away from what is put out in the authority. So I respect, you know, the city prosecutor, I respect Jean Stott-Hurt, our mayor, but this is not something that you should be saying, oh, well, this is the only restriction that there is. It's fine. Let's do it this way. It should be in the charter, Mr. President, it really should. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other opponents who wish to be heard? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Next item.
Non-action items, items 50 through 52 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing and or vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on the agenda for consideration.
You've motioned adjourned? Moved and seconded to adjourn, roll call.
Festerson.
Yes.
Harding.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Palermo.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting adjourned at 2:55 PM.